Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening all. Have you brought hand warmers and everything, feet warmers? No, I've got the heat turned up.
Actually, it's warmer.
It's pleasant, it's pleasant. It's just gonna be cold cardigan until when we get done. We're gonna switch the agenda around slightly and deal with item 8B, CJ Poller's vendor's license request. I'd ask for a motion on that.
Make the motion.
Well, David hasn't been here, we'll give him some action, front row seat.
Put it back on.
We'll let Claire, Ziggy to get the second. Now we'll open up for discussion.
Mike, I just want to say that it was totally coincidental that they're here tonight on the same night that we invited Cheryl to come and talk about the activities of the solid waste district. Just totally coincidental.
It is. It's probably a joke or a pun that we could come up with, but let's not do that. Any questions?
Ever since they put out those little orange things on the road, it's made it much easier and a lot understanding, so people when they come, they understand they have to be on this side or that side. That helped quite a bit, quite a bit.
Traffic toll number 5, it makes them slow down.
Traffic coming, like that.
I will tell you from experience that I don't get treated any differently than anybody else. Obviously Zig, I live near you on Patton Road, so when I wanna bring my trash drop off, I wanna come down West Street and it'll be easier for me to park on the right-hand side of the road and get out of my car and she told me to get back in my car and I went around the other way and got on the right side of the road, so anyway, so the traffic flow is...
Right, right.
Yeah, we're sort of strict about being on our side of the road.
That's the way to be.
Any questions of... Any comments?
They can come up with suggestions. Sometimes people, when they wanna bring their bags after they recycle, they'll stop right in that hill, you know, you can't even get out. So everyone is just sitting there until they get a space where one car moves from you, then they'll start moving up the hill. That's coming out from recycling. You know, I mean, I sat there one time for about 10 minutes and this woman just sat there and waited. In the meantime, these cars were coming around and it was like they were cutting in on her something. She just sat there and waited, she'd get her nose out a little bit, but it was plugging. Maybe Casella might have to control that or something. I almost got outside, "Lady, either you go that way because you can't get in here or just get your nose out there," you know, but sometimes they do that. They'll come out from recycling, then they wanna drop off their garbage and they'll swing right in, you know, swing it like that. And then the people behind them in recycling can't move.
We may have to rethink that layout at some point if the government ever does make us conform with rules and regulations A and R, but we have new commissioners throughout. Governor-elect, so God only knows what's gonna happen. But we may have to reconfigure that whole, configure that whole landscape there with... If we need a salt shed, put the sand pile under a roof, so there may be a whole thing. There's other opportunities, you know, I'm not sure if we wanna totally block the road, but it's all city property, so we may even think about, it's a good point Ziggy too, is to, if they continue to be there, relocate them down on the roadside just past the... Lean to, the public work garage, but yet still so that people could make the turn. That would get them off the main road. We just would have to be concerned about if they have to go, anybody has to go to the sewer treatment plant and/or get in and out of the public work garage.
Water district as well, yeah.
Yeah, water district, so, I mean, if they have a water break, they need to go in. So there are some other options, I'm sure that we could reconfigure things a little bit, make it lovely and easy.
Easy.
So, yeah, it's a good point though, thank you. Any other comments, questions of these people? If not, I'd ask all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? All set? Thank you, thank you. You too. And now we're going to go to Cheryl, our appointee for the Board of Supervisors for Addison County Solid Waste Management District.
Addison County Solid Waste Board of...
Board of Supervisors.
Board of Supervisors.
I did bring a couple of handouts, but I only made six copies, so.
Right, that's okay.
You can share.
I thought this would be a good time to come and give an annual wrap-up for the Addison County Solid Waste Management Board. What I gave you was some highlights on crimes. And that pretty much comes from this book, which is the annual report. And I think the town clerk's office, you should've got one.
Yeah, I got one too.
Okay, good. Oh, y'all did? Awesome. So, I don't need to talk too much about that, but it's just the highlights that were in there. What I asked for is a one-page summary so that hopefully it can be put in our annual report, in the Regents Annual Report, as a one-page kind of summary. I don't know if that's usually done or not done.
It would have to go to... I would figure it out.
Yeah, and I can send it to you electronically if you just want.
Okay.
But we requested that so that, you know, the town clerks could have something that would fit in with the report and not take up too much time. But one of the things that I wanted to draw your attention to the budget, which is on the bottom paragraph, and that's always a concern for us because that's where it hits us, is in the pocketbook. So there was a 1.9% increase, and I don't know exactly what that was due to because we really tried to keep everything as, you know, pretty much froze in every, everything that we could, but could be the insurance. I know that you're working the same insurance hike, which was like 17% because of the cities and towns, which we actually are going away from. So that proposed budget actually made go down so that it's pretty much a wash. We kept the same tipping fee, everything else was pretty much kept the same. Nobody could afford an increase. We actually made a little bit of money at the end of the year because some construction and debris kind of picked up at the end of the year where it wasn't expected. I think the renovation of the McDonald's down there in Middlebury had a lot to do with it. And there's a few other things that happened this year. But one of the, one of the main things that is an excellent highlight is that 50% goal. The state came up with kind of a proposal for the, let me see, what was that? That was the State Management, let me put this right. That was Vermont Solid Waste Management Plan, established a goal of increasing diversion to 50% for the whole state of Vermont and Addison County, has been the first one to actually achieve that goal of reaching 50% diversion from our waste streams. I think Chittenden is, does more recycling than we do, but it's per capita. So in Addison County, we actually get that 50% benchmark, which is quite an achievement.
While you're looking through that Cheryl, I have contact with a bunch of different people throughout the state and I see a definite difference of what happens in Addison County versus some of those others. Chittenden's fairly good about recycling, but you get outside of Addison and Chittenden County and it goes downhill.
Exactly.
People do not recycle.
Yep, there's a lot of, and there are some places in Vermont that are not part of a municipality. They're kind of on their own and that makes it more difficult for them to do effective recycling as well. One of the other things that I wanted to mention is in here is that the district also began a new service this year for offering free waste audits to local businesses. So if any business wants an audit on here's our waste stream, how can I cut back on the difference between waste and recycling, that's another free service they're offering. One of the, one of the main things I brought to you is the E-Waste Regulations because that's kind of the new thing this year. As of the first of the year, January 1st, electronics are now banned in our landfills. So you can't take those devices, they're in that pink column that I gave you. Those no longer are accepted into any landfills. But one of the, one of the goals of the district is product stewardship. And our district is a founding member and serves on the steering committee of the Vermont Product Stewardship Council, which is the organization that basically is trying to get manufacturers to take more responsibility for the toxic components in packaging of their materials. The district was actively involved in reviewing proposed legislation for electronic waste. Fluorescent light bulbs contain mercury used paint in packaging. So what it means is, if you wanna do business in Vermont, there's an extra surcharge tacked on to that upfront to cover the cost of recycling their materials. So, you know, we tried to point it back on the manufacturers, but what it really means is to point it back on the consumers because they're gonna make that up in charging for their products. So it still means that they'll be recycled responsibly and kept out of the landfills. So on July 1st, those same components that are in the pink section I gave you will be accepted for free at the transfer station. And there, they will be paid for by the manufacturers of those items. What they do is they responsibly recycle it. I think most of the electronics go to Good Point Recycling, which is in Middlebury. It's a really excellent company, they do a lot of very responsible stuff.
You said July 1st, is it January 1st?
January 1st, it's banned.
Okay.
So that means you can't bring it to the landfill. But if you hold on to that stuff until July, then you can take it for free. You can still take it to the transfer station, they'll just charge you money for it. But if you wait until July 1st, they accept all that stuff for free. There are some electronics that are not free and that's, some of that stuff is in the gray section. And what I also did was I put on the backside of that first sheet, I photocopied the proposed rate schedule and then it spelled out what is accepted for free and what is still gonna be, still be a charge for. This is handy, this schedule, and I'm always looking for it at home to like, when do they open? And what do they take, 'cause the hazardous waste portion of the transfer station was not always open all the time. They have extended their hours though to make it more convenient for people to come down instead of having to figure out which day, they try to do that every day now. So you can take your hazardous materials down there as well.
We were wondering, what CRT containing devices?
CRT, that's the, I think that's the front monitor. It's that, it's that glass.
Computer screen.
The screen, it's got a lot of lead in it, it's that screen of your monitor. If you still have a glass one. Some of the new ones now, I don't think are glass.
Yeah, computer monitors and that separately, I just didn't know, didn't know what that CRT could...
Yeah, one of those computer monitors you already had and you had CRT, that's what I was wondering.
CRT containing devices.
Yeah, that could be, there were some typewriters around that had little...
LEDs.
Like an LED but a little smaller, I don't know.
E-waste includes computers, which is the monitors, the CPUs and printers, television, fax machines, VCRs, DVD players, stereo, CD players, shredders, photocopiers, and various small items such as cell phones, CDs, DVDs, tapes, cassettes, cords, chips, carts, adapters. Doesn't actually say CRT on it, but I'm pretty sure it was the, I thought it was the glass monitoring.
Most of your stuff.
Cathode ray tubes, that's what it is.
What is it?
Cathode ray tubes. Televisions had the cathode ray tubes in them and they actually have a lot of, I wanna say mercury. There's something in it that's toxic. And there's cadmium in it too, I don't know if that's the one thing in the cathode ray tube, but there's cadmium in a lot of these electronics and lead and mercury. And if we don't recycle them responsibly, what happens is they get shipped out to China and probably offer those kind of stories where they get recycled one way or another. Whether it's some, you know, someone just lighting a fire on or something and melting it and exposing themselves to a lot of vapors. It's done one way or another. So that's the latest, newest thing right now, E-waste, the electronic waste. So my advice is to just hang on to anything you wanna get rid of until July and then bring it to the transfer station.
Motor oil, I see it's free, but it's a pain in the backside bringing two quarts of oil down to the transfer station. Is there anything being looked at, has another way to collect that? Because we no longer have the tank down at...
Well, aren't there a couple places around town that will take that for you? I mean, I thought A and D auto...
CJ's burns it, burns waste oil.
Oh, really?
Broderick's, Broderick's.
Over on Meg's Road? Who's that?
They burn waste oil.
I think we put a...
At the end of Meg's Road, there's a car repair place.
Oh, on Meg's Road, okay.
I know the Benz Automotive had a waste oil burner, but I don't know if they...
Why did we get rid of that?
Liability.
Yeah, the problem Zig is when we, when that tank was originally placed there, the whole running of the recycling center was very different. And the, there was actually a pipe that ran from that tank up to the center and people actually brought their used oil and dropped it off. And a Public Works employee would end up dumping it in there.
Remember that.
And the water, the solid waste district really got burned pretty bad with some pollution, you know. So when the recycling center changed to having Casella there, who's not in the solid waste, who wasn't really running the building, if you will. You have that tank down there that's open, you know, 24/7 and who knows what somebody could put in there. And so it really looked at it as a very serious, you know, liability issue to the district. And I will tell you that the district offered to, that tank was always, has always been owned by the district. The city just provided a spot for that. And the district wondered if they could sell that tank to the city for a dollar. I opted not to take them up on that offer 'cause then the city would be the one holding the bag on any illegal dumping. I, you know, it's like I say, when back when we, when we were really in control of the waste oil, you know, you had a much better handle on what the material was that came in and what you were putting into the tank. And when you lose that, it's just really, it's destined for failure and that's actually what happened.
If you have one container of PCBs that gets mixed in there, it took the whole tank into a $20,000...
Hazardous waste.
Turns it into a toxic mess. And it wasn't locked, there was nothing to stop anybody from going and dumping anything into any point.
Any spillage alongside the tank, you get water, it's a contained unit?
Yeah.
The cars were not good.
No gasoline, no antifreeze, a lot of people, you know, just don't thinking about it, not me.
I thought A and D auto also maybe took waste oil.
Yeah, I thought so.
I thought there's a, I thought there was a list of people that would accept used oil.
There may be a small sign down there Zig, I haven't, down at the solid waste district, lets people know where else they are, but I don't know.
The last thing that, unless you have any questions about the E-waste, but if not, the last thing that I wanted to share with you is the district has set up a revolving loan fund and they're still working on the application. I have a draft loan application here. But it's, they've set up a revolving loan fund for the districts, for the municipalities that are part of the district for recycling, composting, and reuse endeavors. Times are pretty tough right now and if the municipalities have a need to purchase something that's in the range anywhere from $500 to $5,000, like a new tank or you roll up, you know, bin or something that would help recycling, they're offering some money for no interest to help out the municipalities in keeping this diversion rate up at 50%. So that's a $20,000 took out of the budget to put aside for small loans for municipalities to help them out with the recycling, composting, and reusing efforts. And the example, loans to finance a startup of a new municipality recycling, composting, reuse capital projects, improvements to or expansion of existing municipal recycling, composting, or reuse capital projects. You know, if you decide that you need a new building, you know, because you wanna use this one for something else, it's just a way to get money to towns and cities that could use it for improving things when maybe they wouldn't do it otherwise because budgets are tight right now and loans are difficult. So that's a, that's a new thing that just, we just put into place. And I would imagine when this loan application is finished, we'll just send them out to the town clerks. And if you had any ideas on that balance, you know, let us know. It's one of the things that we're trying to, times being tight, to try to help out a little bit. Did you guys have any questions for me? Anything that you had a, you know, something that you've been wanting to ask for a while about solid waste recycling? Or something that you'd like to see us look into? Any unmet needs in the town?
I have a question. A number of years ago, you had these nice black composting bins. Are those still available or is there any opportunity to have those available again?
There's composting bins are available at the district right now. I don't know what they look like and I think they were, they were selling for a cheap price. You know, they weren't in the business to make money, but it wasn't being donated free. But there are composters that are at the district, at the transfer station. And they go around to, a lot of what the district does is educate communities like schools. They go to schools and put on shows. They support the Vermont Recycling Company that puts on plays, different schools theater plays. And composting in schools is something that they always try to promote. There's a lot of, believe it or not, waste in cafeterias. And composting in the schools is something that they work with a lot. There's a composting program going on, but it's kind of a small pilot program. I know Don Magliante from the transfer station just got Dunkin' Donuts onboard in Middlebury. So they do, I think they have a relationship with Shaw's and a couple of the grocery stores and now Dunkin' Donuts in Middlebury.
They're still going to Foster's, bringing stuff to Foster's? At one time they were bringing stuff to Foster's, the farm?
The farm, right.
Their methane digester?
Oh, yeah.
Over and mix it in with their mudoo and turning it there.
The district is, I'm really proud to be part of it and you guys should too because they do a great job at promoting recycling and reusing and composting. It's a huge part of their mission. You know, they try to keep costs down for waste, but anything they can do to get that stuff out of the waste stream, they do.
And one of their spring flyers, they usually put out an advertisement that they usually sell, are taking orders for composters so people can call in, order them ahead of time, go down at a preset date, probably in May, first part of May, late April, and pick their composter up. But they do that and they also offer at the same time, they used to, composter workshops.
Yep. Another thing that we're doing in response to Field Days last year, I don't know if you guys went to Field Days or not, but it was kind of an embarrassment as far as their garbage and recycling, there was no recycling. So people from the district went to the Board of Directors for Field Days and asked what can we do. And so we've actually purchased for them something that's made for events and can be used again, not just for Field Days. But it's kind of a larger recycle bin that you just kind of pop up and so it's, you know, you can place it anywhere. And they've agreed to this time this year to have one of their organizations, maybe Boy Scouts or something, to really help out with the recycling because it was kind of overflowing garbage last year. And, you know, for Addison County, it was, and you had people coming in, a lot of tourists, it was kind of embarrassing. So we talked to them about it and they're gonna work with us a little bit more. They kind of said they knew about it, wanted to do better, but just weren't sure what to do about it. So again, if it's something like, I just need that one tool to put stuff in place, you know, call down to the district, they're really, they're good people to work with. They're always trying to do what's best for you. So if, I can send you the one-page update electronically, if that would help. One last thing, I was hoping, Kim, I was hoping that we could get a connection to the website somehow with our website would be, would be great. I know websites are kind of a...
Not a problem.
It's not a problem.
We can make it happen. We have done some advertising, we just gotta figure out where we can plug it in.
Well, one of the things that they, their website has a really cool online A to Z disposal guide. And if you're new to the area and wanna know what are my options for recycling stuff, I would think that as a new person in town, that would be a great resource.
Plug it in at Services?
They changed the website to actually make it mean something. It's Addison County Recycles. It used to just be the initials, Addison County Solid Waste Board of Directors. But now it's AddisonRecycles.org. It's on that, that sheet that I gave you. And that would be an excellent resource for people in the Gents, just not knowing what to do with it.
Yeah, I would think Services, Mike.
Yeah, we have a section on the front page for Services and that most likely could be plugged in.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
We can put a link.
Yeah, 'cause I, most people want to recycle, it's just a question of how to give them the tools and tools to do it. That's it. Alternative, alternate?
Any questions of Cheryl?
Could I ask a question?
Certainly, by all means, welcome Steve.
Paul Des, first of all, for coming in late, I just happened to jump in on a discussion that is of interest to me. My name is Steve Rapidport, just a concerned citizen here in the Gents. And on the same note of recycling, composting, and everything else, I've raised a question a couple times. I know Joe has heard my questions once in a while in regards to stump dump. We've had it in the past and I was just wondering if there's plans to have it in the future. I've had it down behind Public Works back there before. I know last spring specifically, you know, was not open. I was told sometimes, you know, you can just go when it's open, take a chance, but I was wondering if there's gonna be any formal, you know, dates to be given to, for a seat, residency especially, if it will get rid of a lot of, you know, brush and regular stump dump.
We need to figure out a way to manage that Steve. Some of the issues in the past, if we leave it unattended, items show up that aren't supposed, that don't belong there. So, but we have had some discussion, but need to take it to...
The other thing that we uncovered is that it was operating without a required state permit. So it was, and I know that guy's last name is Daley, so we should...
Is that a financial endeavor? It's just a process, right, more than anything? 'Cause I know, you know, I'm sure it's not just myself, I've heard from other people, you know, this and that. I got neighbors real close to me that, you know, we always look forward to that stump dump. We look to the city voice, you know, to find out when it's gonna be.
Yeah, they actually have two different, I have looked into it, but I haven't followed through with it Steve, but there's really two different types of permits. One is your, is your ongoing stump dump that has an operator in the whole nine yards. Obviously, we can't do that, but you can have what's called an events, you know, stump dump, you know, two or three times a year. And that's the type of a permit that... What ended up happening is I understand, what's my understanding is, is somehow it got caught on fire and there was some stuff that was burning down there that shouldn't have been burned and so then it was realized that the city didn't have a permit for it. So what we need to do is get the thing to be legal and run in accordance with that permit, so.
Sounds good. Once again, I don't know if this was the proper time to bring it up, you know, just to know a concern that the city feels out there. Appreciate your honor.
Yeah, and you're always welcome. I know it's a little bit of a haul, but the transfer station will take all of that. I think the leaping yard waste is like a dog with a load. So if you think, whatever you can fit in the back of your truck, you can take it down there. It doesn't cost very much to get rid of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Cheryl, thank you very much for taking your time. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, or?
Uh, believe it or not, still with it.
Uh-oh.
(laughing).
I know where we were at.
My daughter would forgive me if I had anything to say with it, but, um, I'll be talking to you soon.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, thank you. All right, uh, moving to the warrants that got around, um, I'd asked for a motion to approve the minutes for November sixteenth, two thousand and ten.
I said motion.
Randy made the motion, Lowell seconded. Any omissions, corrections, or errors? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So carried. And now, budget?
Yeah, actually before this set of bills here, I actually made a point to do a, a line-by-line review of the budget. Uh, there really isn't, you know, I don't like to see this, this snow, but, uh, but overall, the budget seems to be in good shape, except as I mentioned before, the continued, continued concern to keep track of, uh, labor costs in the, in the, uh, police department. We, uh, we really find out that holidays, uh, you know, end up really hitting the police department very hard because all of, anytime that anybody's working on a holiday or called in on a holiday, they really get, it really hits the budget, uh, hard. That's, seems to be the primary reason for that. But overall, things are in good shape and, and the reason why I bring, bring up the point that I did the line-by-line review before this set of bills is I also knew that we're going to be paying our insurances. If you're looking through there and seeing property, uh, insurance, liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, you know, at first glance, you might think, oh, look at that, we're, we're in big time trouble, but we actually are paying the first, we pay our insurance in four installments and they're on a calendar year and so we'd like to have the first installment of the calendar year, uh, on or before the first of January. So in this December, uh, set of warrants, that actually includes the first quarterly payment, uh, for two thousand and eleven. So, so the number, anytime that you see a, uh, an insurance-related bill, uh, if it's, it should be of no concern to be seeing a number add or a little below seventy-five percent because we've paid three payments, uh, already. And there'll be another one, uh, uh, paid in, uh, in April and then not paid again until July. So to me, the budget, it looks to be in, in good shape. Uh, you know, obviously these, these dustings, uh, you know, the Public Works Corral will say if it's going to snow, snow, you know, let's go out here and plow ten inches of snow because these little two-inch windy, or like, I shouldn't say two-inch, these little half-inch windy storms on a Saturday and Sunday just are brutal.
Well, they got it this morning. And if they're watching the weather, it looks like we have another significant storm coming in this weekend.
Yeah, so we're-
I thought it was tomorrow night, it's gonna, we're gonna have snow.
We're gonna have a little bit tomorrow night, but there's really something they're watching that could, I guess, turn into another significant amount. Any, uh, questions Mel on the budget? If not, we're going to go to committee reports. Anybody have any?
Question, thank you very much. Talk to me about the Donnelly Fund again. The eleven thousand, four hundred and-
Joan can talk you about the Donnelly Fund.
So I forget, I forget. The Donnelly Fund, five thousand dollars of that eleven, eleven thousand cannot be spent. Only the interest earnings can be used for the worthy poor of the city. Um, that was, you know, that was pre-kept to us when John Donnelly passed away. And the remaining funds is the interest that has earned, uh, gained over the years. We used to use it like for mitten tree, they used to have a mitten tree where at the library or something? We used to buy mittens when I first came on. I remember someone used to always request seventy-five dollars in mittens and hats and stuff. But, um, it's, it never has been used like for someone to request. You know, funds are available, but we have not had that request. So why you're seeing them on there is because we separated it so that the five never get spent and then we're just trying to keep all the pools of money separated. So we've invested that within Jones at seven and a half percent, which is great, for thirty years, but we can't spend it anyways, so.
One of the things, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, Christine, and I, I, I mentioned to Joan, I intended to bring an amendment to our, uh, interest allocation memo. If you remember, we, um, you, you adopted a policy whereby the general fund obtains all of the interest except for the Ray Davison Fund and the Watershed Fund. And those two funds are indeed in a separate, uh, in a separate account. And what Joan and I neglected to think about is that this decree actually required this Donnelly Fund to be separate.
Separate.
I mean, it really should not have been commingled. Uh, there was a time when it actually had its own CD, Joan. If you go back thirty years ago, I mean, there was a, there was a five thousand dollar CD that was sitting around and then in a separate savings account where the interest went into. And then at one point that got commingled and it got its interest, but given the, the policy about the general fund, uh, getting interest, that really is, uh, in contradiction to that will. That money has to be kept in a separate account, so Joan, uh, pull that-
If that's the case, how about the Ada Gagne money? Is that?
Uh, that one is not, you could spend that one off. That's not, it's, that was only-
That's not locked in as far as the interest that could go wherever?
No. The, uh, the city council, you know, when that money came, Joan did a little, as you know, Joan's been doing a little bit of research there. And that was basically the city council, although as, as, as a matter of fact, uh, Jim McClay, who was the, uh-
Over here.
-who was the administrator of the Ada Gagne estate, uh, that will made reference to the fact that, that he, as the agent for the estate, was authorized to spend two thousand dollars, uh, for figurines, if you will, uh, at the nativity scene, all right? He had that, he had the authority to do that, all right? But what he opted to do was to come to city hall and see if city hall would, would in essence, uh, care for those dollars. And so that was put on the city council agenda and the city council agreed to be the agent, if you will, of those funds. And Roger Hayes, I remember it like yesterday, where he didn't want us to just spend that two thousand dollars. He wanted to put that money in the bank and have it grow and have it used for replacement and upgrades of that, uh-
Nativity scene.
-of that nativity scene.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chris. Um, any committee reports?
I attended the Job Corps Awards Banquet last Saturday night. Uh, they had quite a few people. We sat with a gentleman that had twenty-five years of service that was, uh, kind of on loan until his position was opened up in Massachusetts. And he was working, he worked with, uh, the educational portion from ResCare. Interesting man, Dennis Lambert was his name, him and his wife.
Uh, and, okay, yeah, I, I was introduced. Um, and you're gonna work on?
Yes, I'm gonna work on the snow shoveling program. I've got to have a real conversations with Tony Stainings and, and, uh, I'm, uh, having a problem with Tom.
Can't think of his last name.
Nope, just escaped me.
Yep.
Goodrich?
Oh.
Dennis Lambert.
Sorry, just went in one ear and out the other.
It's a problem communicating or just trying to get him to?
His thought process is a lot different than the previous person.
Oh, okay.
And I, I don't think that he has the same mindset, uh, and Mel, I don't know if you want to cover it now or here, uh, we're gonna re-establish a committee of Mel, um, Randy, uh, Kitty Oxholm, myself, and some board members, uh, at the Northland Job Corps to, uh, go over some-
Chief of Police.
We're gonna have the chief, yeah, Chief of Police, as to how things are run over there, how things are reported. Uh, we've had some issues, concerns that, um, things aren't going the way they really should be from both sides, from us as a city and from them as a, uh, an operation over there. So Tony, uh, agrees that we, we're gonna do that. And the first meeting is going to be, uh, January fifth.
January fifth, right.
Four o'clock over at Northland Job Corps. And, uh, I had asked, I had talked to Mel about having Kitty because she was part of the original group that met, um, so she knows where the, it all started and we, then we can modify it from there if we need to, so.
But for you, you know, when Job Corps first located there, um, you know, back in seventy-eight, seventy-nine, you know, Dick Burke was the mayor and that was one of the groups that was formed. I can't remember the exact title, like, you know, Northland's Executive Council or whatever, but, uh, and they still do have, you know, twice a year, community meetings. There's one planned for December twenty-second. You, you may have got that in your, in your mail, but historically, there was also this smaller group that met, you know, every month or two to, uh, meet with, meet with, uh, some of their key staff over there and, uh, to keep good communications, you know? I think lots of times if, uh, you know, people, uh, you know, see things that they don't like, uh, you know, there's a, there's a ear that they can, they can grab, you know, to have, uh, a small group as, as Mike described. So I don't know how that ever dissolved, to be honest with you, but, uh, you know, in talking to Mike and talking to Chief of Police, I think it's something that, you know, is, is needed to, uh, uh, you know, to be the eyes and ears and meet periodically with, with folks over at Northland. Nothing else to report?
Any other committee reports? If not, uh, Steve, you're here as public. Will you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'm actually just attending. I, many times listened to these, uh, city council meetings from home and, uh, always enjoyed it up here. I came to, uh, get away from a child in the driveway. Appreciate it.
So your wife doesn't know where you are?
Oh, she does, right.
Oh.
She's shoveling.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for taking the interest in coming out tonight.
Okay.
Go to all business, Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, Mike, I, uh, I, I have not spoke to Tim Callan, but I actually did, did call the company that he works for and I did not talk to the gentleman, but played a little bit of telephone tag and it's, we are on their list, uh, but, you know, Tim is out in the field. I don't know where we are on the list, but I know that we are on their, on their job list. So I'm, I'm trying to keep the pressure on. I know everyone's anxious. I know the Boys and Girls Club are anxious to get their hands on that survey. So, um, what I'm gonna do is call and, and, uh, you know, I want to find out where we are on this list, to be honest with you, because if, if Tim's, the firm that Tim works for, I mean, if, uh, you know, I understand that, you know, why there was a delay because of leaves on the tree and all that type of thing, but, you know, I think we, we really need to find out where we sit on that list and when do they expect that to be here? And, and if it is, you know, if it is out there, you know, uh, more than another month or so, I think that we may need to find a, a different, uh, firm to do the, do the work.
I, I noticed, uh, that somebody actually started cutting some access in from, uh, New Haven Road.
Well, I had, nor, I, uh, I spoke to Don Selby at, uh-
Northland?
At, uh-
No.
At Country Own Products. He's the product testing manager over there and if you see some stumps being ground around the town, that's some of their work. Uh, they're just looking for places to do, you know, product testing. There's no bill involved and so I, I brought Don over to that site, uh, cause I knew that Tim needed to have some better access and I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know that they did a lot of, a lot of work over there, but they have carved a bit of a, of a path into there so you can access the property a little bit. So that's their work.
Good, excellent. And thank you, CHP.
There you go.
Okay, um, any other things on that or that's?
Yep.
All right, uh, we're gonna go to six B sewer assessment. Uh, the committee met tonight, uh, on the Senior Citizens Discount Program and who wants to take lead on that one?
We did not appoint a spokesperson, so.
I don't mind talking.
Thank you, Chris.
Um, the, the end result was, uh, we have decided to wait to address this later on. Um, we do not feel that we can be, we don't have the capability to measure gallons. Um, yeah, we, the circumstances would be different with water versus sewer because as the example is, you may be watering your lawn and it's not going down the sewer, you know, that type of thing. So then we talked about, um, if we held off and, and let's review Job Corps' pumpage and then maybe we can come to a point where we can decide in the future that we can equitably reduce the rate all around instead of just for senior citizens.
That, the Northland Job Corps probably will see some more changes this, this coming year. They're applying for more money. Whether they get it or not, that'll be an issue, but, uh, that may decrease some more.
We feel that just waiting is the best bet right now to see if it takes up to two years or whatever it is. We don't want to make decisions until now we're done.
Agreed. Agreed. Any other comments from any of the other committee members? If not, we'll move on to city manager's report. Mel?
Yeah, well, just, I want to just hit on a few things and then just talk briefly about the audit. First off, uh, just to let you know, uh, you know, Joan has, has worked a lot of hours relative to the changeover, if you will, of our medical insurance. It's, it's been no easy task, uh, you know, there, there is, you know, what I feel is, you know, certainly can keep us on budget going with this new direction, but, you know, relative to signing up employees with the, the care card to pay for deductibles, it's, uh, uh, I think that she's, she thinks that she's set. Maybe there's one more, maybe there's one more piece or there's no, no pieces left, Joan, but we think that we're all set for, uh, January one, as long as everybody gets their card. So that's, uh, hopefully be hu- behind us. Uh, the, uh, just to let you know, today we had a pre-bid meeting on the Riverwalk Project, uh, which is the stairway and viewing platform, uh, that Trudell has designed for us. Uh, you know, we had to have, you know, there was quite a number of people that attended this mandatory, uh, pre-bid meeting. Uh, there was eight different companies that have, uh, obtained plans. Uh, you have to be on the Vermont Agency of Transportation pre-approved list to be able to bid on this project, but, uh, so we ended up with eight companies bidding on the pro- that will, at least took out plans to bid on the project. The bid deadline, I believe, is, uh, is January twenty-eighth, you know, so there's a bit of a, a lag here and it's still hoped to be a, uh, to, to be a two thousand, or it's really designed to be a two thousand and eleven project. A couple connected things, uh, last week, uh, I went to, uh, Mount Pilgrim and, uh, with Elizabeth Reedy relative to the John Graham Shelter Project. We made a presentation, uh, to their board for, uh, for that project. Uh, we should get the, I don't think that we get that answer until, uh, till after the first of the year. Uh, the other thing that was on that same agenda, I didn't stick around for, but the, uh, and I don't have all of the details and I'll explain the details that I'm, that I'm trying to track down, but, uh, because of some alternative heating systems and solar panels, uh, associated with the senior housing project, uh, they have sought an enhancement to their five hundred thousand dollar grant with the, uh, with the Community Development Program on top of the, on top of the five hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, what I'm assuming is, is that if they get that hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, they can not only follow through with, with having those energy efficiencies for their operation, but that, that might increase the, the loan that we end up with on that, uh, you know, on that project from five hundred to five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, but that has, from two hundred and fifty, because we get half, uh, because half of that five hundred thousand dollars, uh, will be paid back to us for our revolving loan from. And I, and I'm assuming that one half of the one seventy would, would, uh, do the same. So, uh, good, good luck, good luck to them. Uh, relative to the audit, I, uh, you know, obviously the number that, uh, is always most important to us, uh, deals with our fund balance and if I, you know, as y'all recall, you know, I made reference the fact that, you know, our projected fund balance was going to be something to the tune of two hundred and twenty-some odd thousand dollars. And as you can see in the general fund, that is what we ended up with, with something just short of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. The, uh, the sewer fund, I think it was around seventy, which grew from, you know, fifty-some odd from the year before. Uh, I meet with- Uh, I meet with, uh, with the local Board of Auditors, uh, Henry Broughton, Ed Nill, and, uh, uh, Robert Morris, uh, on Thursday. And that's when we actually go through in a little more detail, particularly our internal, internal control. So, so we have both the professional folks doing the audit and then we have our local, uh, local board conducting a, uh, a local, uh, local review. So I'm happy to answer any question. There really isn't any, really isn't any surprises, uh, in here. It's, uh, you know, we knew that the, the fire was gonna end up being just a little bit over budget and likewise, the, are actually into a little bit of a, a little bit of a deficit there, but not anything that concerning likewise with the, with the recycling of which we've set our rates, uh, sufficient to, uh, uh, to make sure that that's, uh, uh, in good, good standing at the end of this fiscal year. So again, unless people have questions, I'm-
Any questions, Mel? If not, we'll move off to number seven and go number eight. Uh, new business? I am number eight, appoint, uh, one of a first deputy chief.
Yeah, the, uh, uh, according to the charter and, and our, and our, uh, in state law, the appointment of the fire chief and the first deputy, which is my appointments, but those are subject to city council approval. Uh, I sent a letter out to everybody in the department, as I have with the other, uh, uh, officer positions. And I, I did get one applicant of which I, uh, would like to appoint, uh, subject to council approval, is to, uh, in essence, promote Chris Gibbo, who is currently our second, uh, deputy chief to the position of first deputy chief.
Effective?
Effective January one.
I make the motion.
I have a motion by Zig, uh, seconded by Randy, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Carrie? We've taken care of, uh, eight B, we'll go to eight C. Eight C, we got double whammied kind of, uh, because I was approached by a, uh, as a ci- a citizen, a pla- police officer that was acting as a citizen feel, felt that we need this. And, uh, Mel and I had a little chat and by that time George had already been to Mel and said, "Hey, we'd like to see the council have discussion to see if this is a direction they would like the city to go in." Uh, this actually, and if I'm running too much and taking some of Mel's, went out of his sale, this actually gives the police department to do stuff. Um, if they go out on a bust or if they go out on the highway and they do a stop and they smell something funny, they're, they're limited. They can tear the car apart and they can take away, but it doesn't really send much of a message. Uh, the, there's some communities that are putting ordinances in places which associate with fines. And so that they actually, they usually don't have enough on them that it's worth to go to the local, uh, jurisdiction, the courts, and try to file that. I mean, if it's a big bust, then yeah, then it's worth it. But the, uh, local, uh, attorneys, um, will not attack or go after small amounts such as a pot pipe or, uh, a bag of marijuana or some drug, other drug paraphernalia. So, uh, open it up for discussion. Ziggy?
Um, is this include, is this containing also going to someone's home and then they find some of this in their private home?
That would be correct.
That'll, they have the right to do that then with this?
That would be correct.
They, they'd have to have probable cause to go into-
Say there was a domestic dispute.
Yeah, I'm not, if, if they go in, say we have, uh, an untimely, uh, death. They go in and they find something, that is when it would take place, when they're invited in. But they can't just go knock on your door, "Here I am, I wanna do a-"
Well, it's like somebody, you know, we get a lot of calls with domestic disputes, you know, husband and wife going at it. And if they walk in and they see this stuff, they have a right to, they'll have a right to do whatever they have to do.
If it's in plain view, I mean, obviously, the whole rules on search and seizure apply, you know? So, I mean, if it's in plain view, then, then somebody could be subject to a fine.
Okay.
Joe? I have a couple of questions. You, you, both of you, you have said that, you've been approached, said that this is unnecessary, this is necessary. I'm, I'm wondering, why is it necessary? Are we seeing an increase in drug activity? Is it just something they like to do? In my, I mean, in my opinion, it seems kinda heavy-handed. But I just wonder why the police department feels that this is necessary?
I don't have a good answer for that.
They just feel like it'll give them some teeth and, and getting some results and getting the message out there. This is something that we don't want in the community.
My other comment is that, in my opinion, this, the wording of this is really subjective. I mean, I, we use drug paraphernalia for the administration of a regulated drug. In my pharmacy, as a veterinarian, is full of regulated drugs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I understand the intent, but, you know, to me, this, the language is very subjective.
Yeah, this isn't, this, if, if you, if the council was in favor of setting up an ordinance, this is not the ordinance, this may not be the in- in ordinance. It would be, this is just what was used in another town. Well, Fairhaven?
Fairhaven, yeah.
This is, this is out of Fairhaven. This is what Fairhaven and their, their, their town set up for their police department to be able to seize, uh, illegal, what they see as illegal drug paraphernalia.
Does anyone know what the status of possible decriminalization of marijuana is in the legislature? Does anybody know where that is or if that's gonna be on the agenda for this year?
We'd have to ask.
Just curious.
Yeah, I've been listening to that, so I was wondering if this-
They said anything, anything under, um, two ounce, I think it was anything under two ounces was gonna be considered a civil and not a criminal.
That law hasn't been passed yet, right? It's being considered, right? Okay.
And most chiefs, to, to add to that, most chiefs and law enforcement officers say that it is a bad idea.
What is a waiver penalty? What does they mean by that?
It's, uh, speeding, speeding tickets are kinda the same way. The, the, a waiver penalty is like admitting you're, you're guilty, you admit that you are guilty and you pay the waiver penalty. Instead of, if you were to fight it, then you would end, and lose, you end up paying the civil penalty.
Okay.
David?
I, I think there's two things and certainly nobody wants to enact any ordinance that's, um, that's unenforceable or any ordinance that, um, that, um, that, that really isn't going to be enforced. But relative to the issue of subjectivity, and I agree with Joe, um, there's subjectivity in, in this. There's subjectivity in just about everything that police officers do. Um, and, and I think that, you know, relative to this ordinance or any other ordinance, I mean, the, the, the basic principle that I'd like to think that we work under is, is that, you know, we have a competent, dedicated chief who hires competent, dedicated officers. And, um, and as, as a result, um, the issue of subjectivity becomes somewhat less. Relative to the, um, relative to where this comes from, I will tell you that as somebody who's on Main Street just about every day, I witness, um, I, I witness things on a relatively regular basis. Um, um, across the lawn and the library, um, some of the other buildings across the street and Main Street. Um, and, uh, I, I don't, I don't like it. Um, I, as, as a business owner, um, I think that it, uh, it sends one hell of a negative message. Um, I think that, um, you know, while, um, while a lot of people may not know what's occurring, that, uh, you know, you see a twenty-year-old kid on the library lawn and another twenty-year-old kid comes up and they go in the back of the building, you know? Um, I'd like to see every one of these people run right out of the city. Um, and, uh, I think it's a damn shame that our society has become so relativistic. That we have a level of concern of enacting an ordinance for something that's illegal.
I do- Just a question.
Yep.
I mean, if, if we have this activity in town, w- would a drug paraphernalia ordinance, would that, uh, reduce that level of activity?
I, I think it would because it would give the police a, it would give the police a tool. You know, there was once a time in the city of Virgens, uh, like a lot of small communities, where people were made to feel, "You know something? There's other places to live." And, uh, it just gives the, the police department an opportunity to, uh, to encourage some of these individuals to maybe go somewhere else.
I guess, I would ask if we could maybe have, uh, police chief or somebody on the agenda to maybe give us a little more information about why they feel like this is necessary.
Sure.
Sure.
Yep. I, I know that part of a conversation that was had with my, myself and my wife, that, uh, it, it gives them a little bit more teeth in the schools too. Um, it also helps sends the message to the kids that this is not acceptable and it's, it's gonna become a financial burden to them if they, if they get caught with this stuff. So it's kinda, it's, it's also an attempt to help to drive it, force it out of the schools where there is some, they don't have a good way to, to do that. Um, I don't know. Again, yes, I think you are very right in your request and we will, uh, ask the chief, um, and any other officers that would like to come and, and talk about this at the next meeting. Uh, we actually have them coming to the first meeting.
Second one.
Second one.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll have the chief and any other representatives that would like to come from the police department and come and discuss that. So, um, Joe, would you wanna table this one? Ask for a motion for tabling this one?
I'll, I'll, I'll present that motion.
Tabling this until the next meeting. And, uh, can I have a second on it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll table this until the next meeting. And again, this is, this is see if the council is willing to support such a, a, an ordinance. We'll get more information and invite the chief and/or representatives, uh, to the next meeting. Okay, next thing, uh, Mel, you wanna?
Yeah, ba- basically, uh, uh, what I'm, what I'm working on, I remember back when, uh, when you all adopted the, the city plan back in, at the end of September, uh, of two thousand and nine. It seems like just yesterday. Uh, Neil, uh, actually took the time to pull out every policy and met with the planning commission, trying to categorize the, the policy. And I think he, he may have shared that matrix with you and when you first get it, it's, it, there's a hundred and thirty-three policies there and you, you kinda, it's so exhaustive, you think like, you know, where do we, where do we start? And, uh, so one of the things that I've been, one of the things I've been do- that I did here for the city council and I'm also doing for the planning commission is that lots of the policies are things like, you know, en- encourage senior housing, you know? I mean, it's, it's just a policy of supporting senior housing. It's not like there's something that you, that has to be done. It's just a, a policy, uh, contained in the plan, uh, of things that we support and encourage. But in some instances, there's a number of policies in the plan that are, are absolute tasks. And these three were, uh, uh, for instance, I, there was, I had a few others that were highlighted. One of them dealt with sewer extensions. And of course, uh, you know, the, the, there was a subcommittee of this board that worked on the sewer extension, uh, article that got presented to, uh, presented to Ferrisburg. So that one at least got a, a half a tick, if you will, uh, as being done. But these three here, uh, these three policies here about appointing these, uh, committees, uh, are charged to the, to the city council. And so I mentioned to Mike that, uh, wanted to at least get this on the agenda. And, uh, the, uh, if I work, if I work backwards here, the Conservation Commission is absolutely driven by law. There's a, there's a statute that, that sets forth what that, uh, what they do. I may have, I may have shared that with the board, uh, before. Relative to the other two, uh, I think what needs to happen is there needs to be a mission, uh, accomplished for them. You know, just appoint a, a recreation committee and let them go off and do whatever they think they need to do. But there needs to be some missions. Uh, so, uh, the, the, the thinking tonight was to, uh, you know, was to see if, you know, council members wanted to take a lead in, in any of these. And if so, then, uh, uh, a, a mission would, would come back to this board for review. And then eventually we would, uh, attempt to, you know, uh, figure out, uh, who, who the folks would be to sit on these, on these committees.
More committees, huh? I, uh, we went to that partnership, um, meeting and they were talking about economic development. And they hired, um, Gabriella to be the new leader of the partnership. And I, and they were talking about this and I think, um, you know-
It's already, it's already up and moving.
Moving, you know, it's the economic piece. There, we're having conversation about that in the partnership right now.
Okay, but they are a separate organization. We need, we need to, we need to pull that together.
I sit on the executive board for them. So if, if there's a way that we could tap into the efforts that are, rather than appointing another, another commission,
Yeah.
tapping onto there, since I'm already part of their executive board, using, kinda tap in and slide in and work together with them.
Right. Yeah, one of the things is this, so you know, I, um, there was a meeting recently that, uh, it was Bill Benton, uh, Scott Gaines and Kevin Rooney and myself met. And, uh, um, basically what we were trying to do was try to gather up all of the, a list of vacant storefronts or vacant buildings to develop an inventory so that, so that Beverly would have something, you know, when she got on board. Now, you know, whether or not you would call that, you know, that group a, an economic development committee, you know, probably not. But I think the part, the partnership is certainly recognizing that they need to play that role, uh, an active role. And, and, uh, you know, you know, we have a, it's a hard enough time to get, you know, get people on committees, let alone get two committees, you know, with a, with similar tasks. So I think, I think maybe that's the question is whether or not the, you know, maybe we should have the, the partnership now that, now that Beverly is on, to have them come here. Uh, I mean, typically, you know, they do a report to the council, find out, you know, what, what their mission is and see if that, um, you know, parallels what's going on here.
I'll put that on as an agenda item for the next meeting.
Sure.
I'll take care of one.
And can I keep talking?
Sure.
The renovation committee? I was thinking of the pool committee. I mean, you have a, a mission there, that pool committee, I mean, there's a mission statement on it. We'll discuss that. I was thinking of something there.
We, we do have other, uh, along with that, we also have some other citizens that are starting to come forward, showing interest in particular parts of things. A gentleman approached me in the store tonight. He had emailed me before about the rail trail, getting that active, uh, getting something settled there. We still have some work to be done. Um, there's some other in- individuals that we could use in different areas. So, uh, that have come forth. So, um, that would, sure, if we can establish, we just need somebody to, uh, establish a, what the mission statement would be. Uh, it's not probably as easy as I'm gonna make it sound, but it means that if, if we can go to another town or city and grab whatever they have and then just wordsmith that, that document to make it work and then we could actually move forward. And that's kinda where Mel and I were hoping somebody would, uh, uh, step forward and maybe say, hey, they, they would be willing to give it a try and, and start something, start the ball rolling. So that's what we're in hopes for. Yeah, I know everybody's busy and there's a lot going. But, uh, somehow either we do it or we have to hire it then. And, uh-
Yeah, I think the first task really is to, is to get a mission statement and a framework of a, of a recreation. So I don't see, I don't see, this is, this, I, I see this first step as being a task, uh, you know, to come up with a mission statement and a framework of a, of a recreation, of a recreation committee. Cause, I mean, this is all it says in the city plan. I mean, obviously it's, it's vague, it's pretty, it's very broad. Uh, so that would just be that-
would just be that, the first step, and then it'd be the city council that would, would in essence adopt that mission statement and structure, and then after that, then the, it would be the, the appointed recreation committee that would, you know, follow the, follow the mission and follow the, the structure that the council set forth. Any comments from anybody?
I will look into the mission statement.
For the recreation? Thank you.
Now, just see, a couple, a couple of questions. That would encompass all our recreation facilities, the tennis courts, the skate park, do it, cover it all in one, under one thing?
I would see it that way. Mel?
It's about, it's about recreation activities and facilities, so...
So, that would include the Little Leagues and all that, and...
Well, I don't know about, you know, about taking over existing organizations, I think it's city, city activities and city facilities.
City facilities.
Tennis courts.
Yeah, tennis court, skate, skate park, the whole lanyards.
Right.
And if there's something...
Would that be a paying job eventually, or?
Again, we're too far ahead, we, we gotta establish a mission statement, what, what's going to happen, and then we'd have to figure out that down the road, that's the way at least, I, I see it. Anybody else have a different view on that?
No, but I was gonna say, I'd be willing to have you, Lowell, on that, because I have access to the town clerks of the town, so I'd have my emails and see if other towns have a, a creation, a mission statement.
Like Waterbury, Littlebury, you know, Bristol, whatever. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Chris, thank you Lowell for signing up for that. We are not setting any sort of deadline, so, appreciate that. Okay, so Randy, you're kind of, gonna talk with the partnership on the...
Yeah, we got a meeting, we also have a meeting the fifth of January at nine AM.
Okay.
You know, Mike, one possibility, even, you know, relative to this, taking this hundred and thirty-three policies and trying to figure out who's responsible or whatever, I, I think that the conservation commission, when you look at it, you know, it acts as an advisory capacity to the planning commission and the, and the city council, you know, maybe when these things got, when these things were developed, some things actually were responsible parties were both planning commission and city council, so maybe, maybe the, the planning commission might take the lead on, you know, finding folks to, to be members of a conservation commission, and obviously, they're not the, you know, by law, they're not the ones that appoint, but they might be willing to assist in, in locating people to serve on such a, such a commission, because as you see, that it, it advises both them and, and the city council, and where, where the advice comes, you know, deals with zoning regulations, you know, you know, how wetlands are handled and natural resources, I mean, they, it's a group that is very specifically focused on those types of, those types of regulations. So, I mean, I just throw that out as an idea, you know, I know, just trying to share the load, actually, and trying to find people.
No, I understand, and, and I think just, there, there's a couple of ways to approach this, too. We have the public announcement section on our, on our website, if you wanted to write something up, we could post it to that, run it for a while to see where we could draw some interest from citizens that might fit within that background, and see who would like to come forward.
Okay.
And that's free advertisement, and if we needed to, we could go out to the, the paper, Addison, independent.
Because typically, you know, if you, you know, it's not that, it's not that this is all that a conservation commission does, but when you read it, it says, you know, to help preserve and protect our city's important natural resources, and, you know, an example, you know, of when one is not protecting its natural resources is when there's bad development. So, you know, like I say, I think that it really goes hand in hand with, with what the planning commission does and, and its drafting of zoning regulations.
Okay. Well, we got a little bit of a start, let's, let's give it and see where, where it goes, and hopefully we can hear something, some reports back within the January to see how, how things are going, and whatever we can do to assist. One of the things that I, when Mel and I were talking about these three items, I also mentioned that I'd like to kind of reestablish the energy committee.
I forgot about that, that's right.
And Mel and I got into some conversation, we, trying to see if we can do something with the streetlights. I attended a little meeting last Thursday, and great presentation on the, the streetlight, the, most of the ones you see out there now draws somewhere in the range of a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and seventy-five watts per fixture. They have a device out that just drops in, in place, I know I'm making it sound easy, there's, there's just a little bit of work to it, but the new fixtures drop fifty-four watts, and the, these fixtures, you may have to change the bulb every two, three years. The LED fixtures go for eight to nine years before you have to do it, then there's a definite benefit. They're expensive, but there's some fundings out there through Efficiency Vermont, not sure how much that's changing. I've heard rumor that it may not drop that much now.
Yeah, Waterbury, actually, I, I sent an email to, you know, obviously, I know a lot of managers in Vermont, but, you know, some of them that I speak to more than others, and Bill Shepleck, who was the town and village manager in Waterbury, Bill Finger down, down in Middlebury, I was, when Mike brought that to my attention, I just kind of threw an email out there to those guys to see if, if either of those towns have, have been doing anything relative to changeovers, and actually, Middlebury has a policy that any time that, you know, there's a burnout, it's, it's replaced. They're in a, they're, they're central Vermont, which is, the tariffs are, are different, but one of the things I learned in, in Waterbury is Waterbury received a grant of around forty-six thousand dollars to, to replace sixty mercury vapor fixtures, and it's not only about money, obviously, it's about carbon footprint as well, but there's, they got this grant, and it looked like the numbers probably had about a one-year payback for them to do a switch, do a switch out, so.
And their, their, their contractor lease fee on their, their new fixtures end up being, go from like nine dollars per unit down to like six?
Right, right.
It was, it was a sizable reduction in, in rate, so, again, we were estimating, we pay about thirty-one...
We pay, yeah, we can see in the budget there, we spend thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars a year on street lighting, and, you know, whether or not there's some, you know, room to, to switch out lighting, you know, over time with grants or something to, to keep that, keep that cost contained. So, I actually, I meet with Green Mountain Power, I think on Thursday, I, I've scheduled a meeting to learn a little bit more about, you know, what they can do, you know, what they can do for us, but I think, you know, well, he's bringing Mike Burke, I believe, with, with him.
What, what?
I don't know off the top of my head, Mike, but I'll, I'll let you know when that is.
If it's, if it's late in the day, I, I would like to try and get back to that.
Okay, all right, I'll let you know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we've got to do some work on the website, I guess, with Addison County Solid Waste.
It's Judy's job.
Yep, yeah, I'll go down. I'll tell her why she's sleeping tonight, then remind her again in the morning. Next meeting, eleventh of...
We're back on regular schedule for, for the next couple of months, so whatever the second and fourth Tuesdays are.
The eleventh and the twenty-fifth of January, okay?
The, just so that you know, Mike mentioned a little bit about the, on the twenty-fifth, the twenty-fifth, the meeting will start at seven, but at six o'clock is when there's going to be reswearing in, and the, there's a, an awards ceremony, if you will, for the police department that will start at six o'clock on, on the twenty-fifth.
January.
January.
Yep. And we should announce tonight, we're extremely proud of our newest graduated officer, Brad Noonan, he took the highest economic...
Academic.
Academic award.
First in class.
Out of his class of thirty-three.
Yeah.
So, we were...
Hopefully, he'll stay around for a while.
Yep. All right, well, I was just talking to him tonight, he says, first day back on the job, I get hit with five cases. That's because they like you. No, okay, town report's going to be coming up, and as usual, I like to try to pick a citizen or citizens to dedicate it to. I have a couple of names in mind, and I really would like to hear from the council if they have some people that they would like to see. It could be, there'd be a, a group of individuals, it could be a single individual, so please talk to me, let me know. Reminder that petitions for running again have to be submitted by the twenty-fifth of January, I believe, Joe?
Somewhere.
Somewhere in that vicinity, so, I know Chris doesn't intend to extend her visit with us, she's had all, all the fun that she wants, so, I know Joe is up for reelection, who else is up? Randy's up for reelection, and I'm up for reelection, so, please make sure you get your petitions out and sign them back in if you have intentions. If you don't have intentions of running, other than Chris, please let me know. I'd like to go out and start looking through the citizens, or talking to citizens, see if there might be somebody interested in joining our fun group. Okay? I guess that's it. Lowell, you want to do your...
Make said motion.
Lowell made the motions that we adjourned, and Randy, second it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed?